To the Maryville Town Council meeting for today, Tuesday, January 28th at 6:30. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing afterwards.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we bow in your presence tonight, remembering the things of the past weeks and months, seeing your hand at work, intervening, guiding, giving wisdom, blessing. Thank you, Father, for all of that. So we stand here this evening, Lord, again in your presence, seeking the wisdom that will help this community to grow and thrive, for families to go rich and deep in their relationships with one another, and for our children to continue to be blessed. We thank you, Lord, for those you have provided for specific purposes in this community. Thank you, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. Mr. January, would you call the role of the council, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal.
Here.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Present.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Present.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Here.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Here.
President Bella.
Here.
Thank you very much. Moving on tonight to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. We have an impact fee advisory board, 2025 Maryville Park impact fee final study. I'd like to call on Mr. Rashami to approach the podium and give us a summary, please, of your letter that you sent to the council. Please use the podium, please, where there's a microphone. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President and the members of the town council. I am pleased to be here and present to you a letter that references the proposed impact fee, park recreation impact fee. Before I start on this letter, I do want to express our appreciation for your appointment of what I called officially five very smart individuals. As we go through this committee conversation, a lot of math has to be used, and we had the best committee, and I want to thank you for your effort. And certainly, I want to thank Ms. Roberts for her assistance during this $27 million of expenditures or asset that you have. She worked with us very closely and very diligently for us to itemize all of these and costs, as well as Ms. Hudson. She was very helpful, and thank you for that also, that appointment. Mr. President, the impact fee started in 2005. This is actually the fifth version of it, the fifth round of it that we are doing. During this past 20 years, the impact fee has generated significant amount of funds, and the committee that you appointed worked with us. We prepared a series of slides, calculations, information for them to review and then make a decision. The letter that you have in your possession, as well as a little handout that we prepared, shows a different process that we have gone through and the committee went through to come up with their recommended fee. In their deliberations of the fee, the committee met three times, and in a very short time, actually, all of them happened in a matter of a month. And I do want to again express my appreciation for the committee members because it was the holiday in the mix, and they have to, they had to come to the meetings. So they met three times, and they deliberated on the findings, the needs, and the assessment of the assets. The way the impact fee works basically is determination of the service unit, the park service unit, the cost of it, and that is what we call the impact. Going through all the assets, identifying the service units, and that was the committee reviewed those and came up with their solutions and their recommendation. The committee reviewed these documents. The committee looked at the housing trends in the, in Maryville and also development trends in, in Maryville. The committee established the townwide corporate boundary as the zone or the impact zone, and that is a requirement by the state law. And the committee reviewed options, that is the most important one. They had a very healthy and excellent conversations in two different meetings about how to establish the fee, how to determine that. We did the calculations, but they reviewed it, and they came up with, with their recommendation. What they, what has happened, Mr. President, and the members of council, you, in the past, prior to the last impact fee was 2019. Prior to 2019, there was no Dean and Barbara White Community Center. That added to the assets of the town significantly. In other words, it added about $21 million, and then that influenced establishment of a, or created a new base for establishment of a fee. And that's what the issue for the committee was. How much can we increase the fee, and to what extent that would be not only fair but also competitive? I do have in your handout a, a schedule of comparable communities with their fees. And what the committee ended up was to, did two things. Number one, they wanted to, not to go 100% fee. Other words, they wanted to be competitive, and they wanted to be economically, make sure there is tremendous amount of impetus in the town right now for development, and so they didn't want to hamper those efforts. So that was one consideration. On the other side of that consideration was a need to, to keep the inflation in mind and, and that, have that into also in their fee setting. And what we ended up, what they ended up was to accept a fee that was based on not only the unit type or housing type, other words, is this an apartment or is this a single But also a reduction in the amount, in the total amount of the fee to stay competitive. And as such, it is, Maryville is going to be in par with other adjoining communities, if not lower, and, and that's how the, the fee was scheduled. The fee is going to increase, say, gradually increasing by 4% annually. So at the end of this five years, they will, they are recommending to, for you to accept such a gradual increase at a 5% rate on annual basis. I want to also stress here, this fee only is applicable to residential developments. It is not applicable to any other types of development, only residential developments. And it is also applicable to new residential developments. The existing residential, the existing people that want to rehab their homes or renovate their homes or even expand their homes, that's not, it doesn't apply to them. So we, I want to make sure that everybody understands that this is not applicable to anybody that is, today lives in the community. This is, only applies to the people that are coming in to the community as a new resident for the community. And the fairness of it is that since the existing communities, the existing resident have already paid through their taxes for the existing facilities, it's only fair that the new residents, when they come in, they also pay their fair share. And one other point I want to stress, Mr. President, is that these dollars are suicide dollars. You cannot use them for employment. You cannot use them for maintenance of the parks. You cannot use them for salaries. It is only for building capacity in the services that you provide or the town provides. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Again, the specific five-year rates are part of your package, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Moving on tonight to the Employee of the Month for January. Mr. Griffin.
Mr. President, thank you.
We pay it with food, right?
Mr. President, Madam Vice President, members of the council, Mr. Town Attorney, Mr. Clerk Treasurer, Department Heads, Chief. I'm excited by all of these, as I've told you, and my former bill that we didn't do quite something like this. And I think this is a wonderful way that the council can recognize the heavy load that the workforce does in delivering services to the people of Maryville. And tonight is a really special treat because it's kind of a twofer, two members of our police department. So I'm going to ask if Officer Nicholas Wright and Blue, his partner, will join us, please? And while they're joining us, I found some interesting facts today, Chief. Did you know that Blue's ability to smell things is 100,000 times stronger than yours and mine?
Oh, wow.
That's pretty cool, Blue. And also, a well-trained police dog can actually save us task hours of between 600 and 1,400 hours a year. That's almost half a person. Nice going, Blue. And finally, they represent a safer way for our officers because of all of the things I just shared with you, they can be alert to an unsafe matter quicker sometimes than even the best trained police officer. Forgive me, Officer Wright. So with that in mind, it is my honor to recognize both Officer Wright and his partner, Blue, as our Employees of the Month. And I'm going to ask Chief Nusis, please, if he will read the certificate. I'll get out of your way.
Officer Nicholas Wright and his partner, Canine Blue, have been chosen to, as the Employees of the Month for January 2025. Officer Wright and Blue are part of our Canine Division, which is a valuable law enforcement asset for our police department. Officer Wright's observations, diligence, and deployment of his partner, Blue, have contributed to many successful drug arrests. One recent arrest involved a high-level drug dealing charge that resulted in necessary, I'm sorry, in the recovery of dangerous drugs that are now off the road. The citizens of Maryville are fortunate to have officers like Nicholas Wright and Canine Blue, who assure the public that our officers are always ready, willing, and able to protect and serve. So we award him this 28th day of January 2025. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Can you bring Blue forward? The councilperson wants to see Blue in the podium.
Chief, tell us what kind of dog Blue is.
Sure. Blue is, Blue is a Dutch Shepherd. Dutch Shepherds are kind of similar to German Shepherds, except they're smaller, they're a lot more amped up, and of course, they have a really cool color on their coat. They're very similar to a Belgian Malinois. They're cousins, I guess, if you will, but as you said, they're very active. They, they're healthier than a German Shepherd, and they're really good for police work. They're very even-keeled when it comes to their, their temperament, and just another great addition that we have in our police department.
That's great, thank you. Congratulations, Officer Wright and Blue.
Congratulations. Officer Wright, who's, who's his buddy sitting up there in the back?
And Blue.
Yeah, who's his buddy?
There's another one back there.
His buddy Yaga. We were, we both got them from Canada at the same time.
He was standing up for his buddy.
Yep. Congratulations, thank you again.
Oh, that's so cool. Boy, Blue.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Moving on tonight to deconsent agenda, we have a variety of items listed there. I'm not going to read all of those, but I will entertain a motion for approval tonight.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, second.
Motion, Miss Hardaway, seconded by Councilor She, for approval. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, the same sign, and motion carries. Moving on tonight to appointments, executive appointments. I will just kind of read these off so we're all here with who they are. The Plan Commission is going to be reappointing Brian Dering for another term. The Board of Zoning Appeals, Peter Gipp. Redevelopment Commission, I'm going to appoint Mr. Pettit, Mrs. Yuzlak, and Ms. Hardaway. Stormwater Management Board, LJ Bud Crist, he will remain on the board. Fire Protection Territory Board, Rhonda Neal and Keisha Hardaway. Economic Development Commission is Dan C. Stevenson, he will remain on. On the legislative appointments during our workshop, we talked about these. The Plan Commission, we're recommending Mrs. Yuzlak, Ms. Chandler Felton, and Mr. Pettit. We'll need a motion for approval on that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mrs. Yuzlak, second, and Mr. Pettit.
Leona, I think.
Leona?
Yes.
Very good. For approval. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. To the Town Board of Metropolitan Police Commissioners, we're going to reappoint Michael Rich. He is a Republican Chair of Maryville and will fill that spot. I'll need a motion for approval, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Pettit, second, and Mrs. Yuzlak. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That motion carries. Redevelopment Commission, we had talked about Leona, Shawna, and, that's it, Annette. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Pettit and Mrs. Yuzlak for a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Thank you. Moving on to Solid Waste Management District, we're going to keep it the same with Rhonda Neal serving another term representing the town of Maryville. Is there a motion for that?
Motion to...
Second.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Hardaway, seconded by Councilor Yuzlak, to reappoint Rhonda Neal. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That motion carries.
Mr. President, can we go back to executive appointments on the Plan Commission?
Sure.
Because Sheila, did we take care of the two Republican appointments? I know Jeff Swite came in to fill out Rick Holt's term. There's usually a Democrat and Republican that are up at the same time, and Luke Rich is the other Republican.
Mr. Griffin, there wasn't this time, right?
No, Mr. President, you've now got the cycle. There was that misalignment. You'll have one every year now, under the statutory requirement for the staggered terms.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
On the standing committees, though, I would like to ask for a motion to approve. They will all remain the same this year with one exception, and that exception is that Mrs. Yuzlak will chair the Environmental Affairs Committee, removing Mr. Pettit. Is there a motion for approval?
Second.
Chair recognizes Councilor She, and is seconded by Mrs. Neal for approval of the standing committee's assignments. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. And motion carries. Thank you all. Moving on tonight to the Budget and Finance Committee Report. Mrs. Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. There's no report for tonight.
Thank you. Street Department and Park Maintenance, Mrs. Yuzlak.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Well, we haven't had any snow for the last few days, but before that, the snowplows were out, and Mr. King did a very good job with the Street Department. As far as the parks, they were all mowed before the snow set in. So maybe Mr. King has more to offer tonight.
I will. So, yeah, we haven't had a lot of snow, but we, we continue to maintain the parks, the bike paths. We've been trimming a lot of overgrown dead trees along the path. We've also been picking up trash. We're out today along Madison Street, along Mississippi Street, we've been working on that. We're doing cross-training with our, our heavy equipment. We've got some newer employees. We cross-train everybody on everything. This is a great time of year to do it. We've got salt being delivered and things that they can, you know, use the front-end loader and other equipment we have. So other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Council Affairs, Mr. Pettit.
No report, just to check in. I will check in with Joe and Michael on pending ordinances that we still need to go through.
Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Ms. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. We will be conducting interviews. We do have two candidates, our Parks Directors, so those interviews will be conducted on February...
Fourth.
Fourth.
Thank you. Thanks for the assist. There are some jobs that will be posted pretty soon for the community center and the Street Department, though we are working out number of employees needed before posting, so please be on the lookout for those starting next week. That ends my report.
Thank you. Environmental Affairs, Mrs. Yuzlak.
Oh, I have no report at this time, Mr. President, but maybe Mark would like to offer something about the retention pond.
See, we all call you the wrong name. Matt.
Oh, Matt. Oh, I am so sorry, Matt.
It's okay. I can comment along those lines when I have my report. Yeah, with regards to detention ponds, you know, and the maintenance of them, as we acquire those properties off of the tax sales, we've been maintaining them, which is a great way to do it. So eventually, we'll end up with, I'd say, a vast majority of the residential, which is a great way to systematically take that over and the responsible way to do it. But other than that, we've also looking to order a Tiger mower, so that'll be another piece of equipment to add to our, our inventory.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
Thank you. Public Safety, Ms. Hardaway.
We will have a public safety meeting on Monday, February 3rd. That ends my report.
Elections, Public Relations, and Town Beautifications, Councilor Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. We met Monday, yesterday, to look at the finalization of the gateway signs, and we're meeting again on the 6th, adding a few more people so that we can move forward with it, but it looks really good, so we are hoping to get those in soon.
Good. Great. Economic Development, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President. We had an RDC meeting before the council, and the RDC took action on five different resolutions, four of which were related to tax increment finance allocation areas. That was the last step in creating these new allocation areas for North Broadway, for the silos east on 101st Avenue, the Mississippi Street Crow, and the, I'm drawing a blank, ladies, on the fourth one. Liberty West, thank you. How could I forget Liberty West? And then the fifth resolution was the first step in a developer-backed bond, which we have done, actually, we've done three of these now. We did one way back when, in 2007, with Holiday Properties in Amerplex, and then when we did two with Don Weiss and Randy Hall. Randy has come back and asked us to do a developer-backed bond for Liberty West in the amount of $20 million. We took that first step. The next step is the Economic Development Commission will need to meet in a public hearing, an advertised public hearing. I checked with Mrs. Chilcott, that is scheduled for February 18th, but I apologize, I don't have the time, but we can confirm that with Mr. Griffin. And then it comes to the council, I believe, and then back to the Redevelopment Commission. So there was some interest as to what the public hearing process is. I believe that's at the EDC level, so anyone that's interested in speaking in favor or against it, that's the time to, to voice your opinion. I think that's all right now for Economic Development.
That's quite a bit, thank you. Utility Liaison, Councilor Chandler Felton.
No report tonight.
Thank you.
President Bella.
Parks Recreation and the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Mr. Pettit.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met, the committee met on Thursday, January 23rd. Several things came out of it, which were already taken care of in the consent agenda as it related to memos that Mr. Griffin and staff have prepared on different contracts and usage of the facility. One of the big things that the committee decided was that due to lack of use, we're going to redevelop the rock climbing wall. I have already reached out to Core Construction, Michael and Lisa, Shawna, to get prices on what is the material worth and what it would take to remove it and/or do something else. One of our, our recreation programmer, Chris Geiger, had brought up the idea of using that space as a spin area that we need to investigate a little bit more at our next meeting. The important thing that I would really stress to Margie, Shawna, and Keisha, there's another committee meeting this Thursday at 5:00, and it's very important that the four of us be there because we need to get, give an answer to Core and American Structure Point on the HVAC system. They are going to have representatives from Circle R and from Train, American Structure Point, Michael, obviously, and we need to give them concrete direction as to how to solve the heating and air conditioning problem in the center that Lisa and staff have been going through. So ladies, please mark your calendars for Thursday at 5:00 at the center, and we'll hear what they've got to say, who's going to take responsibility, and of course, the biggest question is, who's going to pay for it? So we'll see what they have to say. With that, Mr. President, I will stop talking.
Very good, thank you. Behave, Ms. Hardaway.
Always.
Moving on to Special Committees tonight, abandoned and blighted properties, Ms. Haynes Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report at this time.
Very good. Special Town Projects, Councilor Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. We are preparing for our Black History Celebration, which I will let Councilor She go over all of the details about that. Thank you, Vice President Neal. We are having our Black History Month Black Excellence Family Sneaker Ball. It will be February the 28th, from 6:00 to 9:00 at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. Tickets are $10. They will be available as of tomorrow at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center here at Town Hall and 70, oh, and here at Town Hall, I apologize. And you will be able to get your tickets from there. This is a special event. It includes the Maryville Community School Corporation and students, where they will be highlighting black excellence and achievements. There will also be a DJ, music, and refreshments at this event. And that is all. And it is a fundraiser event for our scholarships that we have for the kids.
Scholarship Fund, yeah.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Semi-quintcentennial Committee?
Nothing to report at this time.
Very good. Moving on to Department and Commission Reports, Stormwater Management Resources, Mr. Matt Lake.
Thank you. Real quick, Dire Construction is making really good progress on construction for our Hickory Ridge Regional Flood Control Project, especially given the sub-zero temperatures we've had recently. I received a draft set of plans for the Southmore Park Drainage Project, and we did some value engineering, and after review, we've got a draft engineer's estimate, we're going to save over $400,000 when we rebid this project, according to their estimates. So that's a significant savings.
Yes, it is.
In regards to that, so it's always good to second guess and relook at some of these, and don't be afraid to, you know, rebid these projects and look at, you know, all the little details here and there. Also, it was mentioned... Um, also, it was mentioned about 74th Place in Kaiser Ditch, uh, there was a guardrail that was missing. Um, since it was a roadway safety project, I reached out to Steve. We came up with a quote from a, a firm, and, uh, they're scheduling an installation, uh, sometime, I believe, in the next month or so, so, um, so that'll be taken care of with regards to that aspect. And we are drafting an MO, uh, in our local agreement with, uh, with MCD through our attorney, Jim Meyer, and this is to share, uh, resources and equipment in times of need, uh, since we both share similar types of equipment. If ours is down and they have something available and we need a, uh, something in emergency situation, we could then, uh, have them, uh, do the work, and then they would get compensated, uh, based on the agreement for that. So, that's all I have.
Very good, thank you. Uh, Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, Councilor Hardaway.
I actually have a report. I'm so excited. So, we had a meeting, and at this meeting, there was the election of offices, the first meeting of the year. Um, we renewed the Executive Director Employment Agreement. There are also 42 municipality projects. The town of Maryville has one, uh, project, which is the Roundabout at Mississippi and 79th, and then NDOT has, um, a project as well in the town of Maryville, and that's 73rd Avenue and, um, State Road 55. There was a presentation done by the Indiana Arts Commission, and I was really excited about this one. Her name is Maya, uh, Michelson. She gave a great presentation on art and what it does for the community and how we can, um, enrich youth funds. So they are awarding up to $4,000. It's not a matching, matching fund, um, for spring and fall that we can apply for, um, and we can create murals, or we can, um, put them, put artwork on the bike trails, things like that. So, um, I encourage us to apply for the, uh, award, uh, for the grants up to $4,000. And then there are, they did announce some job openings through NERCSE from other municipalities, so if you are interested, uh, the City of Michigan City has a job opening, um, and then the Town of Cedar Lake has a job opening for administrative assistant. So check out NERCSE's website, um, and see what all the great things that they are doing here, not just in Lake, but Lake Porter and La Porte County. That ends my report. President Bella.
Very good.
Mr. President, to Counselor Hardaway and actually to Steve, but Keisha, you mentioned 79th and Mississippi Roundabout, as well as 73rd and Taft, and we know about 73rd and Taft, it's been long and drawn out. Steve, where are we at? 69th and Mississippi, was that brought up, Keisha? Because that's supposed to be a federal aid project, isn't it?
Yeah, that, that, that is a project that is, uh, through NERCSE as well. Um, it's in, still in the design stages, the right-of-way acquisition, um, has not been completed. We also have to get with, uh, the Hobart Attorney on the inter-local agreement between us and the City of Hobart. I don't know where that was ever left.
Cause that's an 80/20, right?
That, that is an 80/20.
80/20 match?
Yep.
Okay.
In the big book, that project was not mentioned.
Okay.
I don't know why.
That's why I asked. I didn't, she didn't, I know she would've, you would've covered it.
I would have.
Yeah.
Very good. Moving on to the, uh, Shared Ethics Entity, Ms. Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President. We have not had a meeting yet for 2025.
Fire Territory Board?
No report.
Mr. Clerk Treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Bella, President Bella. All right, so just in terms of the Treasurer's report. We're at the, uh, end of the year. Uh, most of the employees will have, all of the employees will have their W-2s by, uh, Friday, and a lot of them are available at the, uh, town in the Clerk Treasurer's office, you need to pick them up. Uh, our annual payroll, uh, for 2024 was $11,949,0627.77. Our, um, monthly payroll, uh, for the month of December was $892,103.22. And, uh, one of the things that the fund, that the town has that has been an adjustment for me is we have a lot of funds. Funds act like different businesses, and, uh, money has to be accounted for separately. And, uh, in order to, uh, make sure that money is spent on roads, police, and the various things, uh, that the town is allocated. Well, we got 119 funds. I wanna try to consolidate some of those numbers, cause I believe simplicity is better than complexity.
Amen.
Oh, right.
Mr. Griffin supports that.
Right, right. So, but, uh, one of the things also I wanted to mention and provide a little detail on the town, I've mentioned this previously, but I need to start providing more detail. How much money does a town have? And, uh, one of the things that we're doing, uh, as a council and as the treasurer, we're trying to be good stewards over what the town, uh, is collecting in terms of tax revenues. I know I work hard for every dollar that I earn, and I don't want people just to waste it or give it away. Uh, so, with that said, uh, we had $48,501,331.62 at the end of December. Uh, we're approaching the month of, uh, January, and as this month closes in February, we'll give you another report. But when you break that down, uh, the Stormwater, which is run by Matt, Matt is doing an excellent job. Stormwater by itself had $7,240,0872.70, and they spent, uh, $755,624.04. So, they're doing a great job, just in terms of managing the money. RDA, uh, one of the large departments that, uh, Sean Pettit, uh, is over and council people are on, it had $17,670,749.94. Well, out, out of that seems like a lot of money, but they actually spent $13,431,715.57. So, that just left a small disparity between receipts and actual money, uh, that went. This is not small, it's, it's significant, it's $4,271.97. And, uh, but, when you get down to, uh, outside of that, the Police Department had some money, uh, that was allocated strictly for the Police Department, that was $923,764.46. And, uh, the Fire Department had $7,866.89. Keep in mind, they just borrowed $6 million. So, that's why they had, uh, a lot of money. But then the court, on the other hand, had a paltry sum of $129,709.69. This court was slate, slated to be closed. Right now, uh, the court is open, uh, due to a, uh, December 26th, uh, judge ruling, uh, so this amount, uh, if that ruling stands, which I believe it will, I'm not an attorney though, uh, that money, uh, will typically, probably go up. Uh, but, uh, the general fund, which is money that hasn't been allocated to any of the hundred and, other 118, uh, funds, had $6,303.50, six, $6,303,507.83. So, just in terms of, um, other things, I, I don't wanna just go over a, a bunch of details, but I will start in the future providing way more details, uh, just as I total, uh, the numbers, just in terms of the amount of debt that the town has, so that we can have a complete picture about where the town is at and where the town is going. Because one of the things, uh, one of the reasons I, I ran is because being a CPA, I knew that my expertise would really help just illuminate some things, so that we can understand where we're at, and that'll help the council people make informed decisions about what we should be doing, uh, with the money, and what we should be doing, uh, just in terms of, uh, who gets what, uh, of our limited resources. But, that concludes my report today.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to the, uh, Department Reports, uh, Parks and Recreation, Lisa Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, thanks to the hard work of our Recreation Coordinator, Chris Geiger, um, we've actually started a coed indoor volleyball league. Um, we have seven teams, um, that are currently, um, participating, and, uh, we're taking registrations up until, uh, February 7th. Um, we open it to anybody. We're thinking about doing a, a community center team, um, so if the Police Department, Fire Department, anybody wants to add on, that's great. Um, the games are on Fridays from 5:00 to 9:00. Um, there's seven weeks that we'll be running it. Um, we also have been having a lot of success with our art program that we've had once a month on Saturdays. Um, the next one will be jewelry making on February 22nd, and on March 29th, we're gonna do another, um, canvas painting, and then hoping to start some classes in April with, uh, fitness and exercise and dance.
Great.
And that's my report, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Uh, Police Department, Chief Nusis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll start off with December. Uh, for December 2024, the Maryland Police Department answered 2,348 calls for service. Those 2,348 calls for service, we ended up having over 65 arrests. Um, there were 456 traffic stops that were made for December, and of those 456 traffic stops, you had 174 tickets that were written. As promised, I got my numbers finally for 2024, which I was very pleased to, uh, that I'm very pleased with and very proud to announce. So, for 2024, in our violent crime category, we had one homicide. That's significant, that's huge for us. Uh, for 2023, we had two, but the years previous to that, we had six to eight, we were averaging about six to eight homicides a year. Um, robberies, robberies went down from 21 to nine for 2024. Uh, rape and sexual assaults went down from 12 to six for 2024. Our assaults and aggravated assaults combined went down from 249 to 217. Our non-violent crime category, you had burglaries that went down from 43 to 31. Our thefts went down from 455 to 347. Our auto thefts went down from 110 to 83. And the only thing that we did see arising for 2024 versus 2023 was fraud. We had 271 cases of fraud versus the 256 that we had in 2023. So, for the year, we did just over 30,000 calls for service. We had 29,898 calls. Um, there were approximately 200 to 300 cat calls, we can't track those in addition to that. We had 4,889 traffic stops. Those traffic stops, there are 3,203 tickets that were issued, and we had 944 arrests. So we had a very productive year for 2024, and we're looking to keep it going, and this was not possible without the hard work by all the men and women in Maryville Police Department. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Planning and Building Department, Ms. Sheila Shine.
No report this evening, President.
Anything else to add for the Street Department? Steve?
The only other thing I have is, uh, 12:01 PM today in this room, we opened our, uh, bids for Community Crossings Project. Um, we had two bidders, um, they're taking, uh, the, uh, bid documents were taken under advisement by, uh, our consulting firm, Butler Fairman and Seifert, and we will be, uh, awarding that at our February 11th council meeting.
Think you were gonna update us on the streetlights that we were talking about today, back and forth?
So, yeah, so I can update you on the streetlights, so there was a flurry of emails going back and forth today about the streetlights on Georgia Street, um, how the town didn't place the order, and, and, uh, several other things. Um, I did, I did, uh, respond to the email. I also got an email back from NIPSCO today from Angie Wright, the Electrical Engineer, um, that she did receive the order from Darius, as I stated in the email. Um, Darius is in the New Business Department, he transferred this over to Angie Wright, and her and I are going to meet, uh, on-site and get this project going, but the order was placed, um, just like I stated in the email, it was turned over to engineering, just like I stated in the email, and I have a confirmation email from Angie that that was done.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Griffin, Town Manager.
Mr. President, thank you. You should have at your station a copy of the staff report, which we're required to do under Code Section 2-39.1. Some of you may have it updated, you'll notice that the signatory on it is the Administrative Manager and Special Assistant to the Council and to me, Ms. Rosas. Uh, this is a delegation I'm welcome for, she's now cultivating and developing the staff report. In the absence of a question about that or another you may have for me, I'll be very pleased to be seated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, moving on tonight to General Orders, we have, um, we're going to remove the Ordinance 25-02. There's a procedural error, we, we're not gonna actually have that ordinance. Uh, this is in regards to the park impact fees. The Plan Commission will talk about this item next.
Right.
And, uh, do a motion through the Plan Commission, and then I think the council will just use a simple motion to approve that, is that right, Joe?
Correct.
We won't need an ordinance this formal?
Yes, you will, cause it's gonna come back as a zoning change to text.
Okay.
So just like any other zoning ordinance, you can do it, cause it's, after it's been heard by the Plan Commissioner, they make, we presume it'll be a favorable recommendation. Our hope is for that. Then you'll just simply act to approve or not the ordinance.
Okay, very good. Uh, we have no resolutions tonight, we have no BZA or Large Gathering actions tonight, there's no old business or new business. Moving on to public comment, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, if there's any public comment tonight.
Paul Pion, 8031 Massachusetts Street. So, uh, Steve, thank you for updating on this, uh, lighting issue.
You're welcome.
So, it, I think there was some miscommunication between how it was set and who, who requested the lighting. When I originally sent the request out through the email, um, and then a month later, I got an update saying that, you know, there's a supply issue with the light poles. So then I called NIPSCO myself and asked them, hey, you know, wha- what's the issue? And then they said, uh, there's no, there's no supply issue. So I talked to the commercial and residential also, and they said, we don't have no requests in for any streetlight poles. I said, okay, so that's when I sent the email out to, to Rick about it, and then he mentioned that you had spoke to Darius about this. So, my, my issue is that NIPSCO tells me one thing, and then, you know, there's another thing on the other side. So, I think that somewhere down the line, something has to be addressed, either with NIPSCO or how we're placing these requests. Because NIPSCO said, all you gotta do is put a request in online on their webpage, if there's a streetlight out, or if you're requesting a new streetlight, and, um, they'll, they'll have an engineer contact, the person who's the point of contact. So, I, I don't know what happened, or who dropped the ball, or if it was NIPSCO's side, it was our side, whoever's side, doesn't matter, as long as it gets corrected, because this has been going on, ongoing issue for the residents for a long time. So, I just wanted to clear that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Massart. Um, I'd like to first bring up the RDC, um, and, uh, town council meetings. We need to, um, understand the, uh, Indiana Open Door laws, and, um, we need to actually comply with those things. Also, as far as the RDC goes, uh, I have requested of Mr. Griffin multiple times to have things printed out in an ADA compliant way, so that I can read the agendas. I don't understand what the issue is. I, hey, do have to thank Linda Rosas for printing out the town council agenda for me, but there are other things that I would appreciate it if they were just taken care of, and I didn't have to ask every single time. Back to the open door laws, well, we need to have, um, an attorney who understands what the open door laws are and the Freedom of Information Act requests. I have, I think, 12 in so far, and every request has violated the state law. Um, I will be, um, making the complaints to the state so that we understand that. And that leads me back to this point, and I've made this point multiple times, and I made the point in emails with you, Mr. President, today. When are we gonna start working together? The question has been raised multiple times, why does it always have to be a fight? I have a group of residents, we don't want the fight, we wanna work with you. You know how many of us are on any of your committees? You know how many times you've asked us to be involved in anything? You haven't. You haven't even bought...
You're on a data center committee, weren't you, Brian? No, I think that's, that was important.
I apologize. One, one thing. Um, but my residents...
Start, you know.
It, that is a very good start. Uh, my residents want to be involved. You don't see them on planning committees, you didn't see any of their names on any of these things, to be asked to be a part of police commissions or things like that. And every time that we come and we ask to be involved, there's no reason why Mr. Pion has to fight so hard about light poles. And the funny thing is, is it's not even his light poles that he's worried about, it's two of our fellow neighbors in two different neighborhoods that we're worried about. It's the same way with the deer crossing signs out by the, the Deep River Park. It took a year to... It took a year to get that installed. At what point in time can we stop fighting and be an asset? We work with you to get things accomplished. If he could find out the process to work with NIPSCO, and when I was talking to Pablo, he even laughed because he was like, they, they wanted to know if I wanted to order the light poles. And I'm like, wow, they'd let you do that? That's interesting. That's what my point is. This thing with the, with the Freedom of Information requests, we shouldn't even be at that point. It should just be information shared. It should be a conversation, and we're not having the conversation. That's not on us because we're begging for it.
Thank you, Brian.
I appreciate it, and I hope that we can get to the point where we are working together, not fighting against each other.
Good evening, Mr. President, Town Council members, Town District Administrators, community members, and esteemed guests. My name is Macy O'Rainey, and I represent a small group of homeowners on the 73rd and Wickham Corridor from the Prairie Creek Homeowners Association. And I always wanted to take a moment of personal privilege to applaud the leadership of our Clerk Treasurer, Mr. Eric January, on his ability to be very transparent and his ability to be approachable to citizens. Just recently, a few weeks ago, Mr. January had, held an opportunity for regular citizens to come into the conduit center and just talk about the issues, and talk about what it means to be a strong citizen, a very engaged citizen in Maryville. And I firmly believe that so goes citizen engagement, so goes the town of Maryville. So I wanted to personally applaud our Clerk Treasurer for his ability to be very transparent. We very much appreciate his ability to speak truth to power, and most importantly, to be a man of the people. He's not an individual, obviously, that will come to a Town Council meeting, speak words, make motions, and then dart out the back door. That definitely hasn't been his style. His style has been to be very transparent, being able to speak truth to power, and being, making true of his promise to be a man of the people and supporting residents. So we want to applaud the efforts of our Clerk Treasurer on a job well done, a job well done, and look forward to exceptional work both now and in the future.
Thank you.
Samuel Pion, 407 West, United Place. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see everybody. Thank you. Just quick, quick little point here. As public officials, one is to use your public official email address, okay, when we're doing official business. And so I know there's two folks on the stage up here that use private emails, and in some ways, that could be a shield to use against from being FOIA'd or use the Freedom of Records Act. And that is something that has been a struggle across the nation in our home state with President Holcomb. That was something that came up with him, and there was a lot of litigation, and there was legal opinions on it, up to the point that there is a code of ethics that rules it against of it because that's a way to be evasive on what's going on during public official meetings. So if that's, if that's our tactic here, we kind of know what's going on, because if we have something to hide, we get kind of little, we get innovative on how to not to be able to get information. And I hope that's not what's going on. I hope there's a specific reason why that's happening, but I want everybody to do the right thing, and if we're doing the right thing, then we should follow protocol instead of trying to be more evasive. So that's my point, so I hope you all consider that. Thank you.
Very good. If there's no objections, we'll adjourn for the night. Thank you. We are adjourned.